Good evening. This eighty-seventh meeting of the seventy-second term of the Baltimore City Council is now called to order. Members of the council, due to us being in a virtual meeting as we deal with the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic, note that I will recognize you by calling and saying that you have the floor. Once you've been recognized, please state your name and then you may begin talking. Instead of an invocation tonight, we will have a moment of silence, which will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, as this is showcased tonight, the clerk will call the room.
President Scott.
President.
Councilman Cohen.
President.
Councilwoman McCray.
President.
Councilman Dorsey.
Present.
Councilman Henry.
Here.
Councilman Schleifer.
President.
Vice President Middleton.
Here.
Councilman Pinkett.
Here.
Councilman Burnett.
President.
Councilman Bullock.
President.
Councilman Reisinger.
President.
Councilman Costello. Uh, Councilman Stokes.
I'm here.
Councilwoman Sneed.
Here.
Councilwoman Clark. Councilwoman Clark. Uh, don't see her. Mr. President, we do have a call.
Thank you, uh, thank you, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Uh, you guys, tonight there is no consent counter, just note that there is no consent counter. We will now proceed with the adoption of the journal.
Mr. President, the journal for the June twenty-second, twenty-twenty proceedings, uh, on the count, excuse me, the July sixth proceedings, uh, have been submitted to the council members' inbox.
Thank you. Without objection, the journal will be adopted. The journal is adopted, uh, bills to be introduced.
City Council Bill Twenty dash zero five six two, Baltimore City Police Officials' Residency Requirements for the Purpose of Establishing Residency Requirements for Certain Baltimore Police Department Command Staff, Providing Exceptions to These Residency Requirements, Defining Certain Terms, Providing for the Perspective Application of This Ordinance, Generally Relating to Residency Requirements as Limited by State Law for Certain Baltimore Police Department Employees and Providing for a Special Effective Date. Sponsors: Sneed, President Scott, Dorsey, McCray, Reisinger, Henry, Bullock, Burnett, Clark, Middleton.
Please note Councilman Pinkett as a co-sponsor, Councilman Cohen as a co-sponsor, uh, Chair Recognizes Councilwoman Sneed.
Thank you, Council President, and thank you to my colleagues who have signed on. This bill is a bit of a continuation that I started when we first got in, um, in reference to our residential requirements, so, um, requiring that our top officials live in Baltimore City, meaning our directors and our deputy directors and anyone who reports to them. And so now we are back and we're asking, um, for your help to make sure that our police officers and our top officers, as well as our, um, colonels and our deputy commissioners, actually live in Baltimore City. I believe that it's going to help our relationships between the police officers and the community. I also believe that it will help increase our population in Baltimore City and our tax base. And so because of this, I know that it will bring a big difference into Baltimore City. When we talk about, uh, the significance, uh, good police officers make in our communities, just like our teachers, our doctors, e- even our family members, when we look up to the grandmothers and grandfathers in our neighborhood, in our neighborhoods, and some of those we call the mayors of our neighborhood. So I just want to thank my colleagues for signing on, and I know this bill will make a difference in the future. So I look to having a good hearing where we can actually, um, learn more about how this bill will actually make an impact in Baltimore City. Thank you so much.
Thank you. This has been assigned to the Labor Committee. Resolution to be introduced.
Mr. President, very briefly, uh, let the record show that Councilwoman Clark and Costello are both present.
Thank you.
City Council Resolution Twenty dash zero two three nine R, Informal Hearing Responding to Mental Health Crisis. For the Purpose of Inviting Representatives from the Baltimore Police Department, Baltimore City Health Department, Baltimore City Fire Department, Mayor's Office of Human Services, Behavioral Health System Baltimore, Baltimore Crisis Response Inc., the 911 Call Center, and Advocates of Mental Health to Investigate How Behavioral and Mental Health Crises Are Handled, Identify Gaps, and Develop the Best Pa- Best Path Forward for Addressing and De-Escalating Crises. Sponsors: Cohen, President Scott, Bullock, Henry, Burnett, Clark, Middleton.
Please add Councilman Dorsey, Councilman Pinkett, Councilman Reisinger, uh, as a co-sponsor, if there was anybody else that I missed, Councilman Sneed as a co-sponsor, uh, Chair Recognizes. Councilman Stokes as a co-sponsor, uh, Councilman Stokes looks to be coming live from the brewery on Gate Street, uh, uh, Chair Recognizes. Chair Recognizes, Councilman Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you to my colleagues for co-sponsoring this resolution. Tonight, I'm calling for a hearing on how we respond to mental health and behavioral health crises within Baltimore. Throughout the United States, we're seeing a nation that is rethinking its public safety and attempting to course correct where, in many cities, including Baltimore, we have put too much onus, too much burden, and therefore too much of a budget into our police departments. In Baltimore, we see several systems, uh, interacting, often they are tangled and unclear. That's why we want to make sure Behavioral Health Systems Baltimore, the Health Department, the Crisis Response Team are all present at this hearing. We want to make sure that professionals are leading when it comes to mental health. We don't ask clinicians to solve crimes, so why do we ask police officers to solve and resolve mental health crises? Through this hearing, I hope to illuminate the system as it exists. I hope to, uh, demonstrate that Baltimore can do better, and I hope to truly decriminalize mental health, because too often, when people in the public see someone who's suffering from schizophrenia or substance use disorder, or even reacting out of their trauma, uh, they call 911 and they expect police to come and solve it. We know that that is not right, that that is not best practice. We know particularly for communities of color, for black and brown people, that there is a higher likelihood that when police come onto the scene, that if they're al- they're there alone, uh, situations can spiral out of hand. And so we want to make sure that we have the correct professionals, clinicians, social workers, EMTs, and others on the scene. And again, I thank you for your co-sponsorship, and I look forward to a productive hearing that comes up with some solutions and some resolutions for this challenge.
Thank you. I would just like to say, as you know, uh, we are going to be, uh, going through a little reimagining of public safety in Baltimore as we begin the next term, and we will be, uh, understanding and changing systems from top to bottom, including how we respond to emergency situations, how we respond, who, uh, how we build better systems to make sure that when our citizens in Baltimore are picking up the phone to dial for assistance, that they are getting the appropriate response from an agency or a partner in city government. And while we have to do this tough work of reimagining public safety, we have to understand that this is something that is decades overdue, and it's not going to be easy, it's going to be tough, it's going to be a lot of things done differently, but we cannot continue to operate the way that we have, because it has been an ineffective, incorrect way to deal with a myriad of issues, including, uh, how we deal with mental and behavioral health. So thank you so much. Uh, this has been assigned to the Health Committee. And we will now, one second, everybody. All right, committee reports. We will now, uh, move the bill on. I will just recognize Councilman Costello. Councilman?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we read short titles for second and third reader for the duration of the meeting.
Without objection, we will read short titles for the remainder of the meeting. Short titles will be read for the remainder of the meeting. Equity and Structure Committee.
City Council Bill Nineteen dash zero eight two, Charter Amendment, the City Administrator.
Uh, Chair Recognizes, Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have, uh, sorry, the Equity and Structure Committee, uh, has had, uh, multiple hearings and work sessions on this charter amendment, and, uh, we are bringing it out on second reader with amendments. I'm a little unclear on the protocol of this. I'd like to turn it over to the sponsor for a few words, but that would be you, so, um, would you like to speak to this, uh, after we pass it, or would you like to speak to it, uh, before I move the amendments?
I'll speak to it now, uh, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to the committee. Uh, we know that this piece of, of legislation that will go before the voters is one that I've been talking about for several years now. At this point, we know that we don't want only, uh, three jurisdictions, there are only a lot of separate policies that do not separate the role of the chief executive and the chief administrator. It's a best practice policy that you see across the country when you look to Washington, D.C., Philadelphia, the cities that we are in between, you vote in Baltimore County, and around Prince George's Montgomery, basically every, uh, county in the state of Maryland with the exception of Baltimore City and two on the eastern shore. This is a role that is embedded in the charter so that you are following best practices and having your government operation be run by a professional, uh, while you allow your executive to focus on executive functions. And this is something, uh, that has to be in the charter, because we can no longer go back to having a inefficient, out-of-date, out-of-structure, out-of-alliance of best practices government structure. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Uh, there are amendments that the committee passed that have been shared with all council members. I move the amendments.
Sorry about that. Uh, well, uh, all those in favor of approving amendments, say aye.
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 All, all opposed of the amendments, say nay. The amendments are approved, Chair recognizes Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the charter amended, amended.
All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay.
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 Roll call.
Yeah, roll call. We're waiting on the clerk. We can hear you.
President Scott. Yes. Councilman Cohen.
Yes.
Councilwoman McCray.
No.
Councilman Dorsey.
Yes.
Councilman Henry.
Yes.
Councilman Schleifer.
Yes.
Vice President Middleton.
No.
No.
Got you, Councilman, uh, Pinkett.
No.
Councilman Burnett. Burnett.
Yes.
Yes.
Councilman Bullock.
Yes.
Councilman Reisinger.
Yes.
Councilman Costello.
No.
Councilman Stokes.
No.
Councilwoman Sneed.
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark. Councilwoman Clark.
I know, Joe.
Mr. President, it is nine yeas and six nays.
Thank you, uh, the bill is approved.
City Council Bill Twenty dash zero five four five Charter Amendment, term limit.
Chair recognizes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Point, point of order, um, was the previous bill moved to third reader?
Oh, sorry, yes, that, that was, sorry about that.
Okay, thank you. Um, so.
Chair recognizes, Councilman Costello, Councilman?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I wanted to know if it would be okay to speak to this bill prior to a vote, uh, based on discussions had with the Law Department today regarding the amendment that is going to be introduced by Councilwoman Clark?
Uh, I will recognize you right after the, the Councilman, Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, the, hmm, where do you even begin? Uh, so this chart. Sorry about that. And I'm, I'm going back and forth between the screen where the agenda is, and the screen where I can see whether or not I'm muted. So this charter amendment, uh, was originally introduced by our colleague from the Fifth District, uh, much earlier in the term, had a chat-in committee, had a public hearing, uh, and, uh, did not move out of committee, uh, earlier. Uh, it was reintroduced this year. Uh, our committee took it up and held a hearing last week, uh, in which the Law Department informed us that the way that the amendment, that the way the charter amendment was worded, um, left unamended, it would include terms that elected officials had already served in the term limits that were being proposed. Uh, the committee, uh, asked for a floor amendment to be developed, uh, which would effectively grandfather in existing, um, elected officials, so that the three terms that this charter amendment will limit any one, two, in terms of serving consecutive terms in the same office, that the starting point for that, if this bill, if this charter amendment passes us, signed by the mayor, goes on the ballot and is approved by the voters, that clock will start, uh, at the beginning of the next term in December of this year. Um, that, that is the point of the amendment that I believe, uh, our colleague from the Fourteenth District will be proposing on the floor. And, uh, so I will, uh, yield my time to the sponsor at this point, um, before the President wishes to recognize other people for that.
Chair recognizes, Councilman Secretary.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, so I first, as, uh, the chairman stated, I first introduced this bill in the beginning of the term. I've now reintroduced the exact same bill. Um, I want to thank Chairman Henry, Henry for an informative hearing, and, and at that hearing, we discovered a few issues that were not the original intention of the bill, and ones that, uh, did not, I was not aware of, nor came out at the first hearing on this bill years ago. Um, I want to thank Victor Turvola and Tony DiFranco for working with the committee to put forth clarifying language, uh, that I was going to introduce. I also want to thank Councilwoman Clark, who has her own interpretation of, um, the language and the best way to do it, and so, um, you know, I'm happy, uh, if, if she wants to introduce, uh, that version. Um, I do apologize for any confusion that this, uh, close to four-year-old bill, uh, caused. I'm glad that, uh, there's a lot of discussion on, on this charter amendment, um, and, and hope that all, uh, bills get the same level of, uh, of conversation. But at the end of the day, this bill is a good government bill that has, uh, well over eighty percent support in studies that have been conducted, and the reason for that is these bills, th- these term limits across the country, um, in many jurisdictions in Maryland, um, they help root out corruption and increase efforts elected officials, um, knowing that this isn't a lifetime appointment, and we too one day, uh, will be a constituent ourselves, and, you know, we have, uh, one of our most beloved, uh, members of the council, the dean herself, Councilwoman Clark, um, you know, is a perfect example where, you know, she's an excellent councilperson who, you know, has run for different offices in the city, has held different positions in the city, uh, and that's really what this, what this bill enables. It enables the, you know, next generation to get involved, but also enables, um, you know, people like, um, like my colleague from the Fourteenth, who ran for other positions, was successful, um, you know, did a phenomenal job throughout her career, um, is, is by far the most popular councilperson in the city, and, um, and, and she voluntarily did this. She, you know, served a couple of terms, ran for different offices, came back, and so, um, I'm just trying to create, uh, more Councilwomen Clarks across the city, and also give, uh, the next generation the opportunity, uh, to have, to be afforded the same opportunity we have. And, you know, I think we, you know, I always talk about us leaving by example, and as the youngest member of this council, this, this impacts me, um, more than it impacts anybody else, and so, you know, I'm, but I'm, what I'm so passionate about, the fact that we need to do it in the best interest of the city. Um, and I think, you know, with this charter amendment and the process, all I'm asking is that we give the voters the opportunity to make this decision, and so, um, I ask all of my colleagues for their support, uh, even those of, of you who don't want to support it, I still ask you for support, and, um, and just leave it up to the voters. If the voters, uh, reject it, um, you know, when it's on the ballot, uh, you know, that's the will of the voters, but, um, if they support it, um, we should allow them to have that opportunity. So again, thank you to everybody who's worked on this bill, everybody who's provided their input, uh, and again, I apologize for the, uh, many misunderstandings that came out of this bill, uh, none of them were intentional, um, and I'm glad we all worked together to get to this point. Thank you.
Chair recognizes, Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, um, I, I, I'm still, I'm still reeling from, from our colleagues', uh, open admission of attempting to create more Councilwoman Clarks. Um, uh, there, there are definitely national security implications for that that we should discuss at a later time, but, uh, for right now, I would, uh, ask that the, uh, Chair recognize Councilwoman, our colleague from the Fourteenth District, uh, so that she can introduce her floor amendment.
Chair recognizes, Councilwoman Clark.
Uh, thank you, um, Mr. President, members of the council, and, um, thank you to my colleague for, um, exaggerated but much appreciated remarks, because I think my husband might actually be watching tonight if, if something good hasn't come on in the meantime. Um, I have an amendment that basically, um, I, I have spoken with, uh, the sponsor about, I've spoken with the chair about, and that actually grew out of the request of the committee to, uh, clarify something that the sponsor intended all the time, which was that, um, that it would be a prospective bill. Um, my colleague, uh, from the Eleventh District did have, did want to say a word about the, the effectiveness of the, this particular amendment, because it was originally intended, the wording failed to, uh, get it right. New wording is, um, these, this amendment, which basically says that when the term of begins, that is on, starts on December ninth and tenth of twenty-twenty, that will be, that everybody in the council then will line up and they, every one of them will have three terms before their terms are limited. That's what this language has said. My colleague from the Eleventh District, uh, and I very much appreciate this, asked for and received a letter from the Law Department that I would ask, part of the permanent file of this, uh, of this council, that expresses what the purpose is and the process, and that, that that, so that we have something that tells us what our intent is if I hope we have, uh, approved this amendment to the bill. So, um, Mr. President, I'm a little, I'm not sure of my protocols, but could we hear from, um, my counsel, the councilman from the Eleventh about the letter that is going into the file before I make a motion for the, uh, amendment? Would that be all right?
Yes, uh, Chair recognizes, Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, councilmembers Henry, Schleifer, and Clark for framing the issue. Um, so, a couple of things. One, I, I do want to note that this bill is different as introduced, twenty dash zero five five one, than what was originally introduced, which was seventeen dash zero 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 five. Uh, the previous iteration of this bill called for a term limit of three terms. The introduction of this bill called for a term limit of two terms. Um, I did ask for clarification from Victor Turvola today, we were on a thread with our council, um, along with, um, Yacking Solicitor, uh, and Victor and Hillary from the Law Department. And the question that I posed was, when I said to Victor, was Victor at all? Please allow me to clarify. I am looking for something in writing that clearly explains the clock does not start ticking until December tenth of two thousand twenty, and that this is prospective, meaning that the first term that is counted is the twenty through, pardon me, the twenty-twenty through twenty-twenty-four term. So I'm unable to put down a law department letterhead for me. And I obviously waived my attorney-client privilege in reading this, uh, because the Law Department does represent the city council. Dear Mr. President and city council members, the Law Department, the Department of Legislative Reference drafted the attached amendment for Councilwoman Clark to resolve a concern that was raised at the July ninth, twenty-twenty public hearing of the above bill for the Equity Committee. The attached amendment, sidebar, which is what Councilwoman Clark noted, and which is what is about to be moved, the attached amendment is intended to establish that Baltimore City elected officials who take office on or after December tenth, twenty-twenty, can serve no more than three consecutive four-year terms in office. Use of the phrase, quote, "on or after December tenth, twenty-twenty," end quote, is intended to signal that any office holder elected to a four-year term in twenty-twenty is able to serve three consecutive four-year terms in office before being term limited. The use of the phrase also is intended to signal that any office holder elected to office in twenty-twenty-four and in the years that follow is regulated by the same restriction. Now, I'm not a lawyer, uh, what I will say in reference to this, though, is that I am still concerned with the language, the use of the phrase "on or after December tenth, twenty-twenty," end quote, is intended to signal that any office holder elected to a four-year term in twenty-twenty is able to serve three consecutive four-year terms in office before being term limited. Does not explicitly state that the clock starts ticking, uh, on December tenth of twenty-twenty, and this could refer to previous terms that have been served and which one was duly elected to prior to, uh, December of twenty-twenty, i.e. twenty-sixteen, twenty-eleven, two thousand seven, two thousand three, and going back in the municipal cycle of election. What I'm extremely concerned with, and then I will turn it back over to the chair, is that a charter amendment of this magnitude could move out of committee when there were questions concerning whether or not it impacted term limits for existing council members who had served previous terms in the council. And to me, Mr. President, that is, that is concerning, so I turn it back, I'm not sure who it goes to, so I go back to you, Mr. President.
Chair recognizes, Councilwoman Clark.
I think everybody's familiar with what the amendment to the bill does. It replaces the original amendment, it expresses what was intended all It expresses what was intended all the time, that everyone starts at the same place that is elected in twenty, for the twenty ten, excuse me, for the twenty twenty to twenty four term, and beyond that, elected and in the future. Each one of those people would be entitled to three terms before termination whenever they get elected to the council going forward. Um, so I would move that we adopt the resolution, uh, this amendment to this, uh, term limited, um, legislation. Thank you.
Mr. President.
All those in favor of approving the amendment say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay.
Aye.
Amendment is approved.
Mr. President. You're on mute, Mr. President.
Uh, Chair recognizes Councilwoman Smith first, then you, Councilman Costello. Councilwoman, Chair handed up first.
No, I'm good, thank you.
Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I wanted to read into the record the response that we received from the city council's attorney as well. What I just read was from Victor Turvila from the law department, who represents both the mayor and the city council. This is from Rebecca Simmons, who just represents the city council. Quote, "It seems by adding a clause which specifically states that, quote, 'this law does not apply prospectively,' end quote, or similar language, you would end all doubt regarding the drafter's intent," end quote. Thank you, Mr. President.
Chair recognizes Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too would just like to take a moment to speak to this bill before a vote is taken on it, uh, and thank you for recognizing me.
Take compliments, and I'm gonna take, I'm gonna take a roll call vote, so if you wanna wait, do that, or do it now.
Yeah, I, I'd appreciate the opportunity to speak to it before the first vote is cast, if that's okay. Um, look, I just think, um, this, I, I don't really know the problem that this vol- bill is seeking to fix, um, or maybe another way of putting it is, I understand some sense of what the espoused problem is, but I don't know that this fixes it. And I think that there is, um, good argument to say that this, uh, maybe does more harm than good. Um, there's an article from the Brookings Institute called Five Reasons to Oppose Congressional Term Limits, and I think it's a good, uh, rundown of the, the main concerns that I would, uh, bring to this, bring, bring forth with this same bill. Um, the first one is that it takes power away from voters. I believe in voters having the ability to vote people in and vote people out of office. Uh, often it is characterized that people who are, who hold office are, um, too powerful to be, um, overtaken, but one of the things that we saw in twenty sixteen, uh, was that there were eight seats overturned, and two of those seats, I would add, were people who were, um, not retiring, not giving up their seats, and they were beaten by a majority, not a plurality. So, you know, sitting legislators do have the capacity to, the, the ability to, to have their seats taken from them by voters. Um, there were others who, uh, I believe, in the face of significant opposition from insurgent candidates, um, opted to retire, uh, than to, rather than duke it out, um, and, and possibly lose. Um, so I, I do believe that there is power in voters' ability to vote people in and vote people out, and I wouldn't want to do anything to take that power from those voters. Um, one of the other things that is mentioned, uh, in this list is that, um, there is limited, there's a limit, uh, to the incentive to gain policy expertise. As legislators, uh, our primary function is to put forth a legislative agenda and policymaking, um, ideas. And, uh, when we limit somebody's ability to do that long-term and to continue to gain expertise and insight in how to do that at the highest level, uh, at the, you know, to the highest quality possible, um, we're limiting the incentive that anybody has to necessarily get better and better at that job. And, um, I think that it's really important to recognize that being a policymaker is a profession in and of itself. It's something that we can grow with and continue to get better at. Um, and that's one of the reasons why I think it's dangerous to automatically kick people out, uh, when they may be very effective, um, a- at, at making good policy. And, um, I, I don't think that there's anything, uh, to show that this really limits, uh, some of what a lot of people are concerned about, um, in terms of like corruptive influence, that, um, in fact, uh, there may be a good argument that, that somebody who has, uh, no future continuing to hold elective office has less to lose by giving in to corruptive influence, and in fact, has the incentive perhaps to appease certain people who are seeking influence with them, knowing that they're gonna be looking for a job maybe two years out, um, as they are being tossed out of the job that they have held for, you know, in this case, maybe three terms. Um, I take great pride in the work that I've been able to do in just this one term as a city councilperson. Uh, I've put my entire legislative, uh, record of achievements and inclu- including the bills just that I've introduced, and in, including ones that I've withdrawn. I've put that all on my website, um, for everybody to see the volume and quality of work that I've put on the table, um, and that I've put up for public discourse. And I hope to have two more terms, you know, at least one term, to continue doing this work. Um, and I hope that if I'm not doing a good job, that people will rise up. And let's be clear, half the problem is not that people are, um, unoustable. Let's be like real about this and say that we as a city have not done what we, we as political leaders have not done everything possible to cultivate strong candidates in all districts for all seats across this city. That, that is a responsibility in and of itself that we as people involved in this political world have. And, um, I may never, and some may recognize this more readily than others, uh, considering how outspoken I am about, I may never have the opportunity to rise into a citywide elective office. I may only ever have the opportunity to continue to serve in this role that I'm serving in today, and for however long I can do it, I will do it with pride and put everything that I can into it. And if I have to be put in a position where I can no longer do it for an arbitrary reason, like the number of years that I've served in it, um, versus being able to continue to do what I believe is good work and try to earn the support and the continued support of voters in my district, I'd like to be able to continue to try to earn the support of voters in my district. Um, I appreciate, uh, you, Mr. Council President, for recognizing me and for allowing me to speak my mind on this matter before we take a vote. Thank you.
Never say never, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Henry.
If, 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 a colleague from the fifth would like to speak first.
Uh, yeah, sure. Uh, sorry, I didn't see you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President, uh, and thank you, uh, councilmembers who've, uh, included your input. Certainly, um, you know, we had an extensive hearing, would have been more than happy to have been learned of one, but, you know, it's never too late to have a good conversation. And so, um, certainly there's a lot of good points that were brought up, and what I will say, and, and I've done extensive research on this topic, and I, I think pretty sure I went, uh, to all of my colleagues to discuss this, at, at least in the original, um, time that it was introduced, and this is the same bill that I introduced, uh, previously, uh, but in a lot of the cases that, that were outlined were, you know, there's pros and cons to everything that's done, um, but the cons were around two key items. Number one, the length of the term, and so, and a lot of other places, whether it's House of Representatives or, you know, other jurisdictions, and, and there is term limits in many other jurisdictions, even within the state of Maryland, uh, but a lot of them have two-year terms. And so we have four-year terms, that's number one. And number two, the other downside in which, um, uh, my colleague mentioned, some of them, uh, is against lifetime, um, bans. And so that was one of the things that when putting together the original bill, that came up and looking at the cons of, um, you know, of term limits, um, opposed to the pros, noticed that all of, all of those cons, uh, were primarily focused around a lifetime ban. And so that's why, uh, made sure that, um, that this bill is not a lifetime ban, you can always come back. Um, and another conversation that, you know, had come up the first reiteration, when we, when we had our first, excuse me, uh, was about how, having smooth transitions, knowing that there's, you know, one person goes out and another one comes in. And also, one of the things that I, I constantly heard was how happy we are that we have, uh, term limits on, uh, some of the highest levels of government. And so, um, certainly there, there's a, a stark difference, I just wanted to point out that, uh, there does not a lifetime ban, that you can, um, serve as many terms as you would like, but after three terms, you can move up, move out, and you can always come back. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Um, thank you. Chair recogni- oh, Councilman Michael Smith, yes, ma'am.
Since we're, we're having this just candid conversation, I first of all want to, um, thank Councilman Dorsey gave a real good synopsis of, um, the importance of not having term limits. As a person that this would affect, as a person that, um, presently serves as president of the Maryland Association of Counties, and also a board member for the National Association of Counties, and have been involved since I first became a councilmember, this is always conversation in those circles. And every conversation I've had, it's been a negative for people, for areas that have term limits. It's a form of oppression, it's a form of stopping barriers, and especially now in this time where we have this, uh, Black Lives Matter movement, this is a, a clear example of stopping some of those things, particularly as a, um, I call myself a, a middle-aged, uh, black woman, that, um, basically, you know, we, uh, let, let me put it this way. Some of us, you know, enter into this field, especially the local level, at different ages, but the people put vote for us. Some, uh, each of our districts have similarities, but, but we also have many differences, but the people put us in. We all have cer- have circum- certain circumstances in our lives that get us into different places at different times and different parts of our lives, depending on what we are going through within our age range, but the people continue to put us in. I just, I, I, I am totally against term limits. I hear conversations, I, Prince George's County is one county that it, that, that tries every time to get term limits, um, taken away. If this takes place, I predict there will never be a president of this association ever again from Baltimore City. That's how, that's how deep this goes. Um, I just want to say that I am a proud black woman that represents the sixth district. I started, and, and I got elected in my early thirties, and, but I, I continue to work hard in my district as, and do, and, and especially with constituent services. Why, what are you talking about? There needs to be a break. What, what, that has nothing to do with the people make the decisions and put in office who they elect. We as, as elected officials have to continue to work on our best practices. Uh, um, Councilman Dorsey really summed it up well, and I thank you, Councilman Dorsey. I mean, these little things that you can keep doing with us are barriers. They're oppression barriers, they're barriers against people of color, and particularly women, women in office. And it, it just has to stop. And that's where I'm gonna end. Thank you.
Chair recognizes, uh, Chair, uh, Chair recognizes Councilman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I move the bill as amended.
Uh, roll call.
President Scott.
Yes.
Councilman Cohen.
Yes.
Councilwoman McCray.
No.
Councilman Dorsey.
No.
Councilman Henry.
I'd like to explain my vote, um, and I'd like to explain my vote with a bit of context. The first incarnation of a term limits charter amendment that was done during my tenure in the council, uh, was by me in twenty twelve. And I look out at the faces of my colleagues today, and I think how different today's council is from the council which prompted for me the idea that perhaps we should have term limits. When twenty sixteen rolled around and more than half of the council turned over, I did not come back to put in that term limits amendment again, although our colleague from the fifth did, and, uh, if memory serves, uh, it was as a, um, it was in keeping with a campaign promise that had been made before he knew what the actual composition of the council would be. But I supported that term limit amendment earlier in this term, and I support it now for one simple reason, which is that the charter is the rules for how we run the government. And the whole point of term limits is that by the time it's really obvious that you need them, it's gonna be really hard to do them. By the time you are unhappy with the difficulty in getting the level of change that the masses feel bubbling up from them, by the time you notice that the council that you have is out of step with the people, by the time you notice that it's hard to do it, and you have to wait for full-on revolution, which is what happened in twenty sixteen, and I'll be honest, I'm not sure that we would have had the level of change that we had electorally in twenty sixteen if it had not been for the incendiary events of twenty fifteen. Twenty fifteen was a watershed moment for Baltimore City. People came to a lot of different conclusions, and one of the conclusions that they came to was that we couldn't keep doing the same kind of leadership, and we couldn't keep running the government the way we'd been running it. And there was a big change mentality out there in twenty sixteen, and I would say that that change mentality continued on through twenty eighteen, when we turned over most of the senate delegation and a lot of the house members for Baltimore City, and then continued again in the most recent primary. But unless that is how you want change to happen in your legislature and among your elected officials, unless you wanna wait for those generational change moments, which literally come once a generation, term limits in your charter are the only way of ensuring that there will be some regular churn and regular opportunities for people who have different approaches and different attitudes from the ones in office to definitely have a chance to have those voices. And that's why I vote yes.
Councilman Schleifer.
Yes.
Vice President Middleton.
No.
Councilman Pinkett.
No.
Councilman Burnett.
I'd like to, uh, explain my vote, Mr. President. Um, I, I, I'll keep my remarks short. Um, I, you know, would want to second the, uh, remarks of Councilmember Henry, uh, as a, uh, person who started knocking doors before the uprising, uh, and continued to knock on doors after the uprising. Um, I can confirm wholeheartedly that the, uh, conversation shifted dramatically in what people wanted to see and the type of leadership that people wanted on this council, um, and the trend, and, and a feeling that- wanted on this council, um, and the trend, and, and a feeling that there needed to be a significant transition. Uh, I'm thankful for the voters that have given me that opportunity and, and have done so again. Um, this one's kinda tough for me because on one hand, I, I do believe that elections should be term limits in themselves. Um, but I also know the difficulties of getting elected in Baltimore City, uh, which is why I introduced the Fair Election Fund and have been supportive of other, uh, reforms to, you know, whether that be ranked choice voting or other, uh, mechanisms to change the process. Because as, as much as we, we can give lip service to, uh, you know, with, with this taking place, uh, 2015, if that didn't happen, the, the, this council will look a lot different. Um, and we can also even go further back to just structural changes to the council, the removal of multi-member districts, which was led by the voters themselves. Uh, and my understanding, uh, one of the primary motivations was that it was very difficult to get turnover at the city council, uh, because council members are running at slates and particularly difficult to break up said slates, uh, among, amongst several other reasons. But that's why we have single-member districts, um, which was led by the voters. And the reason I'm supportive, uh, is that it will go through the voters. And so the voters will have the opportunity to decide if they believe in term limits in November. Um, I don't believe it should be up to the council, um, to say yea or nay on this one. That's just my, my personal opinion. If the voters are, are supportive of this, uh, they'll, they'll make their voices heard. If they wanna see term limits, they'll make it heard. If they don't, then we'll, we'll see that reflected as well in November. Uh, and for that reason, I am voting yes.
Councilman Bullock.
I'd like to explain my vote, please. So, um, I'll agree with a number of the points that were raised, uh, by Councilman Burnett. Again, I do believe that a lot of districts believe the enhanced voter. Um, I, as one who ran, um, several years ago and had to speak to someone who had been in office for quite some time, some of that's part of the experience, I understand how difficult it can be, uh, for an upstart candidate to be able to do. At the same time, I also recognize some of the points that have been made by previous sponsor and bills while the current sponsor. Again, there are a lot of, uh, uh, good points being made in terms of, sort of total. And I also look at it from a perspective of local scientists. And I look at other simple jurisdictions from our side and, and larger, and what you will see is that they have term limits. Those term limits tend to be on city by office. And so I look at it from the perspective of the mayor, um, president of the council, comptroller. I think those make sense from the executive city by point of view, uh, less so for the district level. Um, again, I do, um, I, I'm sympathetic to the concept of term limits. Um, I'm a bit conflicted on this one, so for that reason, I'll be abstaining.
Councilman Reizinger.
Yes, uh, Mr. President, I'd like to explain my vote. Uh, my colleagues, uh, the pros and cons made some good points, but for a council person that's been in the city council for 25 years and went through six elections, um, I just, I'm going on the side of democracy and support the charter change, uh, so, uh, the people of Baltimore City could make that decision. So, uh, I vote yes.
Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to explain my vote. Um, I'd like you, Mr. President, uh, and for anyone else who read Sports Illustrated growing up, it was a small parliament beginning with a very obscure sports statistic on a weekly basis, and it says this week's sign that the apocalypse is on us now. I use that in reference to me wholeheartedly agreeing with Councilman Dorsey. Um, I'd, I'd like to point out a couple of things. Um, one is I've raised this issue with virtually every single charter amendment that's been proposed. Um, I, I wanna understand, I, I'm having trouble understanding what is the problem that we are attempting to fix. I can't seem to, to, to figure that out. I think Councilman Dorsey did a wonderful job of articulating all the issues with this. Um, I'm gonna take an opportunity to point out our colleague from the 14th district, Councilwoman Clark. Uh, in her last election, Councilwoman Clark won a head-to-head race, one-on-one, two total people in the race. Councilwoman Clark won, someone lost, I can't even tell you who it is that lost. But she beat the person 89 to 11. Okay? You don't do that unless you bust your tail 24/7, you do constituent services, and you put forward policy that your voters support. Um, as someone who works well over a hundred hours a week on this job, 52 weeks around the year, I do believe that we have term limits. They're called elections. If you don't do your job, you won't have a job anymore, and you need to find another line of work, because this work isn't, you're, you're not cut out for this type of work. Um, so for those reasons, I vote no.
Councilman Stokes.
I wanna explain my vote. Um, I, I believe this, uh, uh, decision is still in the hands of the voters. If you go back and look at 2016, you had eight new members. You come back in 2020, you have six new members. So I believe that it's still in the hands of the voters. That's where it should be. That's where it should stay. So I vote no.
Councilwoman Snead.
Thank you. I just wanna say that I ran in 2011. I was 13 votes short in, um, that election, and I worked very hard at the time the council person was not doing what we thought was his job. And so it's very hard, um, when you're active in your community, um, when you are doing what's right for your community, if someone just flies right in and, and, and like these dynasties. And so therefore, I just don't think that that's the right thing, and we have to leave it up to the people, put it on a ballot, and let them vote. I concur with a lot that was said, but I remembered, you know, just being there and recounting those vote and asking them to count every single vote because we were that close. And the people in my district were like, I can't believe it. Many people sat out for that. Um, and to be that close, there's some that's even closer to that. And it does not, it does make a difference. Let the people decide. Put it on a ballot. I'm gonna say, yes, we gotta move forward. Term limits are the right thing to do.
Councilwoman Clark. Councilwoman Clark.
Thank you for the kind words this evening. I feel as if maybe what this really is is a premature farewell party. Um, I hope not. Um, thank you for the support of, um, the amendment, which I think safeguards what members of, what is the best council I've ever worked with, and I thank you all. I just don't support term limits. Never did. And my, my colleague has been so, worked so well with me around this amendment, and I really appreciate that. And I've thought, and I've thought, and I've gotta say, I'm sorry, I just can't support it. I believe, I believe, I'm, I've served 32 years in the city council. I started in 75, I'll end in 20. So they weren't all in a row. And they were tough struggles, and every single person sitting here has been through exactly those kinds of struggles. I really believe the people will choose the people that they want to elect, no matter how old or young they are. So I vote no.
Mr. President, with a vote of seven yays and seven nays and one abstention.
All right, uh, this, this, uh, we are going to, we're having a little bit of a technical difficulty, you guys, so we're gonna recess for just two minutes until that we can come back. So just give us one second. All right, welcome back, everybody. Sorry about that. Uh, Executive Appointments Committee.
EA 20 dash 0270, Kimberly M. Grade, Member, Commission on Disabilities, District Four.
Chair recognizes Councilman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee held a hearing on July the 8th, 2020. I move the nomination.
All those in favor of approving this nomination, say aye.
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 All opposed, aye. This nomination is confirmed.
EA 20 dash 0276, Natasha M. Dartenier, Member, Board of Directors for the Parking Authority of Baltimore City, District Four.
Um, Chair recognizes Councilman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the nomination favorable.
All those in favor of approving this nomination, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. This nomination is approved. Uh, just, just, again, just wanted to remind everyone that, uh, City Council Bill 20 dash 0545, uh, term limits fail due to a time. Land use commi-
City Council Bill 19 dash 0575, zoning conditional use conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to two dwelling units in the Arc Zone District, 806 Reservoir Street.
Chair recognizes Councilman Reizinger.
Mr. President, I move the finding of facts.
All those in favor of approving the findings of facts, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. The findings of fact are approved. Chair recognizes Councilman Reizinger.
Mr. President, there's no amendments to this bill. I move the bill favorable.
All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. The motion is approved. This bill moves to third reader. Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill 20 dash 0542, Commercial Vehicle Parking, Clarification of Scope.
Chair recognizes Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Transportation Committee held a hearing on this bill. There are no amendments to the bill that was voted favorable by the committee. I move the bill favorable.
All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Please note, Councilwoman Clark, as a nay, uh, this bill is approved. This bill moves to third reader. Third reader for final passage.
City Council Bill 19 dash 0474, rezoning 3925 Gulf Street. President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reizinger, Costello, Stokes, Snead, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 20 dash 0487, zoning conditional use, amending ordinance 18 dash 107. President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reizinger, Costello, Stokes, Snead, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 20 dash 0497, zoning conditional use parking lot, a portion of the property known as 201 Reed Bird Avenue. President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey.
No.
Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reizinger, Costello, Stokes, Snead, Clark.
Please note, Councilman Dorsey, as a no, uh, this bill is approved. Uh, committee members, when you hear your committee, please proceed with your committee announcements from your committee. We will start, uh, with the top this week. Uh, Budget and Appropriations Committee, Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, no announcements for that committee. Um, the biennial audits oversight commission will hold a hearing on, on Wednesday, November 18th at 5:00 PM. Uh, as of now, this will be a virtual WebEx meeting, and no announcements for judiciary. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Education and Youth Committee, Councilman Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Education and Youth Committee will hold a hearing on the state of reopening Baltimore City Public Schools on July 22nd at 5:00 PM. Uh, I encourage any of my colleagues, both, uh, on the committee, but those who are not as well, to attend, uh, as this is obviously a major challenge both in Baltimore and across our country.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Uh, Equity Instructor Committee, Councilman Henry.
No announcements. Thank you.
Executive Appointments Committee, Councilman Stokes.
No announcements. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. Health Committee, Councilman Burnett.
Uh, I don't have any announcements, Mr. President, for the Health Committee or, uh, legislative investigation.
All right. Housing and Urban Affairs, Councilman Bullock.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. The Housing and Urban Affairs Committee will be having a hearing on Tuesday, August 25th at 2:00 PM. The City Council Bill, uh, 200549, ordinance, city primary, three days, the apocalypse monument, the, uh, I'll pick those ones. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Labor Committee, Councilwoman Snead.
No, thank you, uh, Council President. We don't have anything new at this time.
All right. Uh, Land Use Committee, Councilman Reizinger.
Mr. President, the Land Use Committee will hold a hearing on Wednesday, August the 19th at 1:00 PM. The council chair, I mean, yeah, on Wednesday, April the 19th at 1:00 PM, will bill 20 dash 0539. It's a rezoning at 555 Dundalk Avenue, block 6694, lot 142. This hearing will be conducted as a WebEx virtual hearing.
Thank you. Public Committee, Councilman Sackler.
No announcements for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development, Council Vice President Middleton.
No announcements at this time, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Uh, and last but not least, uh, Councilman Dorsey, Transportation Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. No committee announcements, but I will say that if I don't get a, an answer pretty soon from the Department of Transportation on what their policies and processes are in terms of, uh, considering and approving traffic calming, uh, on city streets, um, that we will hold a legislative oversight, uh, a, a legislative oversight hearing in the committee on this subject. It is the number one complaint, um, request that I get in my office, and, um, I've been waiting for about a month now for the department just to tell me what its policies are. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, regular announcements, uh, regular announcements. I will start, I will ask that Council Vice President Middleton honor and open the silence for the now 174, uh, victims of homicides as of this morning in Baltimore City, which is even on where we were this time last year, uh, in 2019, where we know, which was the deadliest year on record. Uh, and to that end, I know that we, uh, suspended them, uh, for a while due to COVID, but I would ask that the Chair of Public Safety and, uh, Budget work with the Police Department to restart, uh, the monthly oversight hearings so that we can continue, uh, uh, we know that we're having some meetings with them, but we would like to continue to hold them publicly accountable in this, in, in the form as we do on WebEx with the other agencies. We continue to see, uh, the gun violence be unwieldy throughout the city. We know the incidents that we've had today and in recent months, and we have to, uh, do our part, uh, from this side of the legislative, uh, authority to make sure that we're holding them accountable and really making sure that we are putting their feet to fire about what their plans are and how they're actually executing them. And I would also like to add that as we continue and see in our country, uh, a spike in COVID-19, that we, everybody in Baltimore City, continue to take, uh, the coronavirus, COVID-19, extremely serious, uh, treat it today as we treated it in February and March and April. You can see states like California, which are now, uh, going back to not being able to have anybody, uh, go to indoor, indoor restaurants or facilities. You've seen cities like Los Angeles and San Diego say that all their schooling will be virtual. We saw the state of Florida have 15,000 cases in one day. Uh, this is still a deadly virus. We need people to be wearing masks, to practice, uh, uh, physical distance wherever we can. We know the impact that it has had, in particular in Baltimore, on, on our black and brown communities. We have to understand that this is not over. So when we see, uh, folks having cookouts and parties and pool parties and all these other things that we're seeing happening, you're being irresponsible. You're being irresponsible of your life, your children's life, your parents' life, your grandparents' life, the people that you work with. We have to do everything that we can to not have us see what's happening in other states and cities around the country. So we know it's hard to stay away from our friends and family, but we do not want to be Florida. We do not want to be those kind of places, and we will, we will be on that path if we do not, uh, uh, practice the advice of the public health professionals. So thank you very much. Uh, I guess I'll go in opposite order and start with Councilwoman Clark to see if you have a general announcement.
Actually, um, thank you for that message. Um, Milton once wrote a line- Milton once wrote a line that was, "They also serve who only stand and wait." It's always been in opposition to the way I feel about life, and it still is, that we should be active in everything to try to make life better for those around us and those across the nation and the world. But what you just said, Mr. President, is very meaningful. It's hard to stay closed up in a house, I'm sure my father, my husband would verify that, but to the extent that we can, and still do our work, I think it's very important for us to try to get through this without creating or helping create another surge. One other thing I'd like to say, I'd like to thank you, Mr. President, tonight, when we talked about a very controversial bill, people got to talk about it before they were on a roll call. They got to talk about it while it was still on second reader and not decided. We used to do that all the time in the city council, and I think it's a great equity and transparency way to go. I know we're not used to doing it that way, but like, I'm number fourteen on roll call. I don't mind that, I like being the last vote, and I like being next to the exit door. However, it means that anything I might want to say about something, I probably won't get to say it until the vote's already decided. That's just me, it's just an example. It's very, I felt so good today, listening to the pros and the cons, and how well they were arguing, and how heartfelt. And to the extent that we can do that more often on bills that are controversial, the better, the people will understand what we're talking about and where we're coming from, and that there's really no right or wrong, there's really, a majority thinks, maybe this is the way to go, so let's go. So, thank you, it was great, and I hope that we'll have more occasions like it.
Thank you. If our colleagues don't have the video on, I will assume that they don't have a message, Councilwoman Snead.
I just wanted to remind folks that our youth workers are heading to work, so thank you to all the organizations and businesses that actually put it all out there and are hiring our students during COVID-nineteen. Thank you, thank you, thank you to the MoLab, Mayor's Office of Employment Development, who have worked to put it together to make sure that our young people in Baltimore City have summer jobs, so let's wish them well as they start their new, as they start their new jobs. Thank you.
Councilman Stokes.
I just want to give a moment of silence to a good friend of mine, his name was Guy Williams, but his name was Rick. He had a little bar lounge over on Patterson Park and Chase, he hired young men and women who probably had some substance abuse issues, or somebody else that was not hiring them, they gave them some dignity, and put money in their pockets. Unfortunately, he went to Hopkins, and he said his chest was hurting, and he sat in the emergency room for over an hour, an hour. His friend left to take him over to another hospital, and he passed away. So, I want to give a moment of silence to Guy Williams, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Councilman, and I'm sorry to hear that. Let's see, Councilman Bullock.
Thank you, Mr. President, no announcements this time.
Thank you. Councilman Pinkett. No.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, okay. Mr. President, can you hear me?
Yeah, be good.
Yeah, sorry about that. On this Saturday, July eighteenth, from twelve noon to ten o'clock, on their South Valley, um, partnering with, um, an organization called, major food distribution, we are distributing eighty thousand pounds of fresh fruit and vegetables on that day for families that are impacted by COVID-nineteen. And so, I'm just asking, to spread the word, from twelve to three on Saturday, we're asking that each car that comes up take at least two boxes, we want to make certain that every family gets exactly what they need. You don't have to have ID, you don't have to sign up, all you have to do is have a need, and we're also asking ministries and other organizations to come and get multiple boxes, so that you can help support either senior homes or your neighbors as well. So, I'm just really addressing the food insecurity that our community has, that's been magnified during this pandemic. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, thank you so much. Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a number of things I want to mention this evening, but first, I do want to also, second what Councilwoman Clark said about the debate and dialogue occurring on second reader before a vote. When I joined the council, look, I didn't have a whole lot of experience watching city council meetings, I really had to learn, meeting after meeting, how things worked, what our rhythm was, how things went. It was surprising to me that more of that didn't occur, and it remains surprising to me often that more of that doesn't occur. And as we look into a next term, and, you know, we look at the structure, we had a lot of conversation about the structure of our city, and a lot of say, you know, what the council president has as powers, what individual council members have as powers, or where that gap between power exists, and what's in the charter, what's in the code, and what's in the rules that we make as a city council. This is one of those things that's in none of those places, it is purely in practice. Do we make a practice of having that debate and that dialogue on second reader? I've made it a point of saying, look, I'm on four committees, a commission and a board, I am not going to go to all of the committee hearings of committees that I'm not a member of. Second reader is the place where I will speak my piece, and I think that that's one of the ways in which I see us maybe moving in the direction of how other legislative bodies work a little bit more normal, in like more of a normal kind of fashion, in a way that's more normalized than other legislative bodies. So, I just do want to let my, my, my point of view on that. A couple of things, also as the Transportation Committee Chair, I just want to, and as somebody who helped out with the council president's bill on slow streets, I want to just mention for anybody that's watching, that this is a program that is going into effect with the Department of Transportation. If you want to see your street kind of impermanently closed down, to see a lowered volume of traffic moving through it, something that's safer, the Department of Transportation has made effective now an application form at transportation.baltimorecity.gov/slow-streets-application, slow streets application. That, that, that will help us get this program rolling, helping the department meet its mandate created by this council of creating slow streets on twenty-five miles of streets in the city in the next fourteen days. And so, I just want to put that out there for anybody, anybody can apply to have their street made into a slow street. Couple other points here, I just wanted to bring up, applications are still open in my district for artists, to go to artistdistrict.org to apply for a two thousand dollar grant. This year, we'll be awarding six two thousand dollar grants, whereas in the past, we've done four three thousand dollar grants. So, we have opportunities for visual artists, musicians, writers, actors, and anybody who has a creative practice and lives in the third city council district, should go and check out artistdistrict.org. Also, in the arts, I want to give special acknowledgement to the literary arts this week. Prior to COVID, I was speaking a lot about theater events, and musical events, and all kinds of events that were people, that people were going to. Today, I want to give a special shout-out to the authors, Baynard Woods and Brandon Sutterberg, for the release of their book, I Got a Monster: The Rise and Fall of America's Most Corrupt Police Squad. I was fortunate to get an advanced copy of this, and I'm really taking in all this information that I think is so critical for people in Baltimore to understand the history of the Gun Trace Task Force. This book becomes available widely next week, and I hope that everybody in Baltimore will read this book, and really understand better what was allowed to occur within the Baltimore City Police Department with the Gun Trace Task Force. And finally, last thing, I want to ask for a moment of silence for third district resident, Avis Ransom. Avis Ransom was a lot of things to a lot of people, she worked in chemical and systems engineering, she was a writer and technical analyst at Morgan State University, she was a board member with the Baltimore Algebra Project. In twenty eighteen, she became a member of the Baltimore Sustainability Commission, she produced radio shows, she was a racial justice action trainer, and a founder of Baltimore Racial Justice Action, ERJA. She was a third district resident in the Hillen community, but, you know, not believing that community is limited to geography, I would say that she was a member of a much larger community in Baltimore, a leader, a pioneer, and a rock, fighting for racial equity, social equity, and bringing that into any conversation that was being had. And it was just really impossible to know Avis to any degree, and not look harder at yourself and the systems around us, as a result of knowing her. I was fortunate to meet her at her door in Hillen, knocking on her door in twenty fifteen, I was fortunate to be able to form the Sustainability Commission's Land Use and Transportation Subcommittee with her, in order to look better at what we should be doing as advocates in the commission. She passed this weekend, and I just want to say that she will be sorely admitted, sorely missed, and in the words of my friend and sustainability co-chair, Mia Blom, "Avis was a fierce woman who fought for equity and justice at every turn." So, I want to take a moment of silence for Avis Ransom this evening. Thank you, Mr. Council President and colleagues.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Council Vice President Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. I first just want to say that there was a fatal fire last night on Chemical Road in my district, and they didn't find the body till after, basically, the fire was over, so that's still under investigation. But I want to remind our city residents that we have a very unique smoke detector and carbon monoxide program, and all you have to do is call three-one-one and get an appointment, and they will come and put a ten-year smoke detector in your homes for free. So, my, the fire is still under investigation, so I don't want to mention any members of the family right now, but we want to keep them definitely in prayer. And our next council meeting is July twentieth, twenty twenty, at five P.M., virtually, and maybe have a moment of silence for the now one hundred and seventy-four victims of homicide in our city, and also our continued moment of silence for the people that still suffer from the opioid epidemic and the, and the COVID-nineteen pandemic. And also, a moment of silence for Mr. Guy Williams and Ms. Avis Ransom. Thank you.
There being no further business, this concludes the eighty-seventh meeting of the seventy-second term of the Baltimore City Council.